I'm walking to the Budget and Finance Committee. And today it is to a debate between Director of Budget and Councilors Brian DePena and Vice Chair Dave Abdu, who are present. I'm Mark LaPlana, the Budget and Finance Committee Chair. So would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under the individual's will.
So a couple of very, very brief comments. Tonight we want to hear from the, from the folks who are running the various departments in the city. This is, we're going to have budget meetings tonight, tomorrow night, and Thursday night, starting at seven o'clock. And this is a bit of a, we're going through some, just so you're aware, councilors, we're going through some technical issues in the back room and they're looking to fix some stuff back there. So what I'm hearing right now, and it's probably going to be very annoying for everybody, is the backbeat. So hopefully we can get that fixed as we continue this discussion. So it's going to be very simple. We're going to start off with, tonight, with some of the smaller budgets.
This is Lou Garrett, his last day in Yankee Stadium.
So this is the order we'll be going in. We're going to start off with Personnel, then Airport, then Community Development, and then Mr. Ryan Ello is going to be the emcee for the rest of the show. So he's got a lot of other stuff hanging out. So we, oh, that's much better, I think. Great. So Mr. Bonet, would you care to lead, lead off the, starting, playing leadoff tonight? And what we could do is get the page number on the budget, because we'd like to, yeah.
Page fifty.
Thank you.
Twenty thousand dollars from professional services has been transferred over to the purchase of services. And this year is the year coming in fiscal year twenty, it ends with zero, so we're on, under the ordinance of the City of Lawrence, a mandatory pay classification and compensation plan is in order. And so the twenty thousand that you see being transferred to the purchase of services is going to be paid for that.
It's a pretty, it's a pretty milquetoast budget, to be honest with you. I don't really see a lot of changes in here.
No changes, little bit of changes.
If you look at the, like you said, in the Office of Workers' Comp, there are some changes there.
Our Workers' Comp, all that money is being transferred over to the Workers' Comp line item now. There's a total, you know, special line for that. Mark will go into it later on. As well as, I think this year, we have taken out line items from department heads who were paying for Workers' Comp for individual employees. It all, now it's under all collective Workers' Comp line item as well. That way it allows department heads to hire for those particular positions.
I don't have a lot of questions on the personnel. Is there any other questions on the personnel members of the committee? Mr. Abdu?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Bonet.
Good evening.
I may have missed it. On page fifty, under Professional Services, the sixty-two thousand decrease?
Part of the Workers' Comp.
It's part of the Workers' Comp. Mr. Ryan Ello, will that show up in everyone's budget?
It's the, the, at page fifty is the summary of Frank's, all of his divisions. It's his Personnel Department.
Yep.
And then it's the Workers' Comp Admin and then Workers' Comp Medical Bills.
Yep.
So that's the change between last year and this year. The Workers' Comp, we've moved to the back of the budget, it's a different line item.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Bonet, thank you, Mr. Ryan Ello.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any further questions? We're all set, Mr. Bonet.
Thank you. Thank, thank you for taking me first this year.
Mr. DePena did not want to take you first this year, if you wanted to know the truth. He wanted to take you last. Let's go on, and again, no particular order, Airport is the next smaller budget item.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Councilors, Mike Miller, your Airport Manager.
One second, Mr. Miller, we need to figure.
Page one, Mr. Chairman.
No, I missed Mr. DePena.
Here's on page one-seventy-three. You'll notice that again this year, we kept a tight budget. We only increased in those areas that we had to because of contractual negotiations or those general expenses that the airport has no control over. I'll start with Personal Services, where increasing that. Falls because of contractual obligations. And also the way they calculate payroll, the year falls or a couple days that fall into it, so that's why you'll see there's an increase. If you look at the next purchase of services, a natural reduction in that grouping of nine thousand seven hundred. We looked at our energy costs and figured a way that we could actually budget tighter in order to come in at where we expect to be. And then if you go down through our supplies, we level funded all those line items. Our intergovernmental, you'll see a noticeable reduction in our other assessments. And that is because of pension assessment reduction, that number's given to us. And our salary was, it's based on salary, our salary was reduced this year because an employee left the department in August and has not been backfilled. We've advertised and interviewed, we'll be backfilling, so next year that number will go back up again. And then our other charges and expenses has a minor reduction. And that's again coming out of a Medicare reduction. How that got calculated, I'm not exactly sure, but it's a reduction of a hundred thirty-six dollars. Finally, our site improvement has an increase of four thousand dollars. And that reflects our five percent contribution to the matching grants that we receive from the state and federal authorities. We're responsible, depending upon the grant, for as little as five percent or as much as twenty percent. And that line item contains the money we need to match the programmed grants that we're going to have. And you'll notice a reduction, a reduction in our additional equipment line item. I did obtain a grant to purchase some equipment, so we won't have to, it's going to be a hundred percent grant, so we won't have to use some of that money to buy that equipment. That being said, the budget in total is again funded a hundred percent by the revenues derived at the airport. And I welcome any questions that the committee may have.
I'm going to ask you a rookie question, even though I've been on the council for seven terms. Why is it that we cannot make the airport entirely self-sufficient instead of the city contribution of five hundred seventy-five thousand?
It is entirely self-sufficient. The monies are collected by airport revenues, all the users, the tenants of the airport and those that fly into the airport pay fees and rental rates through the airport commission. Those monies are deposited in the city's treasury, but under the state law, the money must be appropriated through the city. We can't exist as an independent authority. So even though the monies are on the city's. The monies are collected by the user. And that's how the cycle works. We collect, we deposit, and the city's Controller's Office processes all the invoices that come through.
So just so we're clear, so there's no money, there's, everything is self-sustaining, there's no other, monies coming from the city to augment or offset?
That is correct, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions? The committee?
Sir?
We're good?
Thank you very much, Miller. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Next, Community Development?
Good evening, Councilors. DeWone Martinez Dominguez, Community Development Director. So for FY twenty.
Page three.
I'm sorry? Oh, page sixty-one, sorry.
Sixty-one.
Sixty-one through sixty-three, yes. So for FY twenty, basically it's, it's level funding. And the breakdown for it is basically the homelessness initiatives coordinator to help pay for her salary, which is fifty-seven-five annually. And so the general fund supports this with thirty thousand. The remainder really comes through the Mayoral Task Force with Lawrence General Hospital Determination of Need Funds. And we'll have those funds available projected through FY twenty-four. It also supports the community health specialist, which is not new. That position has been supported through general funds for a while now. It's about forty thousand annually. The general fund supports thirty-five thousand and the Mayoral Task Force supports the remaining five thousand with, again, Lawrence General Hospital D O N funds. There's a bulk of the time that the Community Development Director and the manager of Financial and Administrative Services devote that are not funded through other, other grants that we, we receive. And so this helps support basically work that's not, non-funded. So supervision, for instance, supervision of the homeless initiatives coordinator, attendance to meetings that are unrelated to the grants but related to the positions, doing any homelessness-related work. These are just some examples of how these funds are utilized. That's the bulk of it. And then some funds are utilized for purchase of services, so about eight thousand fifty. About fifteen percent of the annual lease for the community development space at Twelfth Methuen Street. Eight hundred and twenty-three dollars, which is approximately sixteen percent of the custodial services cost for the community development, our, our Office of Planning and Development Space. So we all basically share the, the cost of the custodial services. And then in-state travel cost for non-ground-related meetings, especially those particularly related to homelessness and any other trainings, events, and grants. So that's basically the budget we have before you. It's pretty straightforward, so I'm open for any questions.
Any questions? Karen, is, is, is the new reorganization, is that impacting you at all? The reorganization, I understand it's taking place or about to take place with the various combining of agencies, is that impacting?
Funding-wise?
Uh, no.
In any way?
Yeah.
Actually, no.
No?
Having, I've, I came, I became a director under the new reorganization. I think it makes sense to integrate all of these departments, because it doesn't matter which part of any development area project that is happening. You still need to speak to inspectional services, you still need to speak to planning, zoning, community development, and economic development. So it makes sense to have sort of these departments in line and better coordinate the work, so.
Thank you. I think we're all set. I think, thank you very much.
Got a question?
Mr. DePena?
On the, your perception about the homeless coordinator. I see the board, last year I have thirty thousand, now thirty thousand, but I see more, more people homeless in the city. What plans you have for next, for next year?
Okay, so budget-wise, I think the city's supporting it through general fund, it shows commitment and validation for the need, for the work. I mean, it goes without saying. And we have secured other sources of funding to complement it and make sure that the hospital supports these efforts, because you cannot disconnect public health, public safety, homelessness, housing. You really can disconnect those. The coordinator's position, it's not a case management position. So I think people are under the impression that that person is hired to eliminate the homelessness, the individuals that are living under the bridge and doing. That's not what this position is all about. The issue of homelessness and chronically homelessness in particular, it's a very difficult one to resolve. It's not a Lawrence issue. It's really, I've talked about this before, it's really more of a national issue, a state issue. I mean, if you see reports left and right, you'll see this. There's a very difficult-to-serve population. This is population that often have issues around mental health, substance abuse, chronic illnesses. But more so than anything, we've talked about the cost, the housing cost burn in our city and the high, high cost of rents and how difficult it is for families to sustain themselves. And so when we've done some of our research, particularly the point in time count that's done in January, the primary reason why people were on the streets were really because they couldn't afford the rent. And so we're looking at something different. So the role of this person, know that it's to better understand, map out the assets that exist, coordinate the services that exist within our city, and come up with new solutions, creative solutions to, to be able to address the issue. So it's not really dependent on one person whether or not we get more homeless people. It's not. But it's nice to have someone on board who understands homelessness in the broadest term possible, so we can incorporate or integrate that knowledge into everything else that we're doing as a department and as a city. I don't know if that answered your question.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Abdu?
Thank you, thank you. To take off on Council DePena's interest, who is then the strategic partner here in the city that attacks homelessness issue? I know we're getting into the good season here, and I know we depend on a lot of the nonprofits, but as a municipality, who is our point person for the strategic approach?
So the strategic approach coordinator, this is the homelessness initiatives coordinator. This is the person that really is almost the liaison, serves as the liaison between the city, the partners, and even HUD. Because even our emergency solutions grant, that's the person that's overseeing the implementation of that grant as well. So that is the person to go to for learning more about how do we strategize around the issue of homelessness for all the populations that we have, not only the chronically homeless, not only the ones that are under the bridge, but also the eighteen to twenty-four-year-olds, eighteen to twenty-five-year-olds that are considered homeless youth, as well as families who are at risk of losing their homes. And so it is a very complex issue. That is the person to go to, but understand that her role, which her name is Sandy Guerrier, her role is really basically that, pretty much as the coordinator of the Mayoral Task Force, who sort of becomes the hub and a place where people come together, exchange best practices and, and resources. That's the similar. When we created that position, we wanted it to be almost the equivalent of the Mayoral Task Force Coordinator, because we understand the depth of the issue. And so that's the person.
And do you feel that that position is resourced well enough? And do we have the capacity going into next year to do better than we did this past year?
We can't, this is not an issue that a city alone through a staff can solve. This is a person that's going to sort of pull together all these resources, work better with our department, work better, establish relationship with the police, with fire, with emergency services, with nonprofits, with housing, with landlords. I mean, it is, it is just a combination of people. That's why it's a coordinator. You need all these people to be able to resolve this issue. There's a lot of challenges to serve, serving the population, and so the homeless population, so yes. Since we've had someone on board, I think that for two years, I want to say when I was a coordinator for the Mayoral Task Force for like two years, three years, didn't matter what issue, what health condition we were talking about, homelessness was the biggest challenge and bearer that we were facing, which is why this position sort of came about. There was no one really working. And through some of the meetings that we had community-wide, which the mayor hosted, a couple of task force meetings, I was there in my role as coordinator of the Mayoral Task. I could quickly figure it out, you know, people are not talking to one another. There might be resources, the resources might not be sufficient, may not, they not be, maybe the appropriate ones, maybe we need to figure out what else to do to address this issue more head-on. But it's not, you, you need that person. The person that's there right now has a lot of knowledge, both about homelessness and how comprehensive it could be, the whole broadest term of homelessness and HUD. I think that we needed that piece too, to be able to figure out what's, you know, how do, how do we address this issue, so.
One last question. What is Sandy's last name?
Guerrier. G U E R R I E R. One of my wishes for Sandy is to come in before council at some point and do a presentation, quick presentation around the issue of homelessness. I think our previous one, our previous homeless initiatives coordinator was here before you. I think we're in a different space right now, and I, I would love her to come in and talk about the issue.
Yeah. I, I personally would like that. It is annually, it's consistent challenge. I have, I'm sure we all have, speaking for myself, frustrated constituents, frustrated advocates. What is the city doing? What are we doing? And I'll, it, sometimes it feels disjointed, because as one councillor, as a staff of one, and you work with the city, and, you know, we had some transition. And it is, it's, it's, it's a community effort. And so anyhow, I look forward to meeting Ms. Guerrier.
Sandy, yes.
Sandy.
Ms. Guerrier, yep.
Not that homelessness ever takes a day off, but obviously it becomes a little less acute this time of year. So as we head in to next winter, I look forward to meeting her and, and connecting.
Just, it doesn't matter where we go, for trainings and opportunities, be it HUD, be it with National Community Development Association. We just went to a Mayor's Institute on Affordable Housing and Health. We were only six, one of six communities who were selected, and out of those six, five, we're dealing with the same issue. So this is not just an issue that we're dealing with, it's, it's larger than us, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. All right. Let's go back just a little bit. Let's, let's take up at this point the city clerk. And the other portion, other departments, if you will, elements of this department.
Good evening, Councilors.
You can find that on page fifty-five. Fifty-five. Good evening, Mr. Clerk.
Good evening. And wherever you'd like to start, I don't really have a summary unless you'd like me to start with a summary.
I, I think what, the most useful portions of this discussion is, what are the changes and why, why are, why are the changes? I mean, that one dollar here, one dollar there, but the more substantive changes I think are.
The financial changes mostly are related to costs and expenses, related to elections, of course, in the election department, but in the city clerk's office, not really that much. I mean, I think the biggest change is the addition of an assistant city clerk added to the city clerk's budget to be assigned to the election division. I haven't quite been explained by the administration how that's going to work or how it's to be implemented, but it's to address, as the mayor said the other evening, to address shortfalls in staffing. He didn't quite put it that way, but that's how I see it. And I think it's a staffing issue that's being addressed in, in elections. The result was because of a shortfall in staffing in elections, additional staff became necessary. But to address the prevailing issue, what is what you don't see in the budget, is my annual cry for two more additional staff, for a minimum of five staff members in both the clerk's office and the election division. What the budget does not tell you is that there are now two people in the election, I mean, in the city clerk's office, operating on a daily basis, which will impact service to the public primarily and to the city council. The other items that are of concern is certainly the lack of, lack of staffing in both departments. The continued failure to provide sufficient staff and workable equipment that impact the ability of the city clerk's office and the election division to provide service to the public. The city council, the administration, all the government agencies as well. And all who require information and access to information, the clerk's office and the election division provides. Vital record maintenance, or the, the lack of maintenance of vital records for the past fourteen years has been consistent throughout my tenure and probably has gone on for twenty years. The impact of irretrievable damage to records that track the city's population by birth, death, and marriage records, which will have a long-term on the impact in the city of Lawrence. Vital records maintenance is a primary function of all municipalities, which has been neglected in Lawrence for many years and will ultimately result in addressing the matter through crisis management and costly repair. I got to commend certainly the finance department and the Controller's Office for making financial provision. But the most important component is staffing. Anyone who has been to the clerk's office during the height of, we'll call Rush Hour, can see very plainly that there is a lack of staffing in the clerk's office now primarily. The elections office with the addition of one additional staff, which we've had for maybe seven, eight, maybe nine months now, has been remarkable. Just one staff member. But the costs seem to be sufficiently addressed. The, it's the costs that are not addressed that causes me some concern, in particular, items such as the decennial. You know, I don't know where it may be provided in the budget in reviewing the last decennial. There was significant, we'll say, legal representation required, where the administration had set aside fifty thousand dollars for legal representation for outside counsel, who ended up charging ten thousand dollars at a, at a really significant reduced rate. Mr. McDermott, who's now passed away, was expert at attending legislative hearings, redrafting of district lines for the various wards and precincts, actually drafting the ward and precincts lines. These are costs and expenses that may be incurred, maybe the administration expects to have the, the city attorney's office to address these. The other raise, in one of the raises you'll see in, in the budget is three thousand dollars in council advertising. We had discussed that at the budget sessions, from twelve thousand to fifteen thousand. I expect it to be more closely to twenty thousand because of the increased responsibilities of advertising or legal advertising for legislation. Zoning in particular, the, the city attorney's office recently changed the rules on how advertising should be done for zoning, to mirror chapter forty-B. I'm sorry, not forty-B, chapter forty-A, the zoning law, to be advertised in addition to the planning department twice over a two-week period prior to any hearing. Which the last hearing we had on zoning, which concerned the substation over here on Common Street, that costs a thousand dollars just to advertise that item. Every time you do a zoning change from a petition, it's going to be a thousand dollars. We average about three or four of these every year. We average about three or four of these every year.
So the, the, thank you, Mr. Clerk. So, um, so there's two things, right? One is, what is changing in the budget? And we talked a little bit about it, but mostly what is it that's gonna make your department more efficient and more effective and bring it to where you believe your offices should be? And as we all know, if the mayor doesn't put it in this budget, it's very, it's, uh, we can't add, as Mr. Rabbity started, or somebody said at the beginning of the meeting, we can't add to this. So, um, I, I, I don't know what to do. Um, you make a very compelling argument. Um, the stuff you sound, that you say sounds fair and reasonable to me. Um, it's, I think it's, I, at some point, you know, the, the, I can't speak for the mayor, but I can only understand that there's decisions that are made with dollars and where those dollars are going to go. And for some, whatever the reasons are, the arguments that you're making aren't as compelling as the reasons he's spending money elsewhere, at least putting it down to us. So I, I can't answer that, why that is.
No, and, and I, and I understand that, Mr. Chairman, and my purpose for being here and providing that information is, look, I work for the city council, I work for you guys, and I am providing you with information. I'm not trying to make a compelling argument, I'm not trying to, uh, throw flash at you and throw money around like it's, you know, wooden nickels here. What I'm trying to do is trying to say, tell you the same message that I've been giving you for the last nine years. And it's not because the clerk's office is failing or falling on its feet, but you did see the election division fall on its face and, but for some creative management, which regardless of the lack of recognition, you'd have been facing, and the city council, I mean, in general, I don't mean you personally, been facing, uh, a, a, uh, chaos in the last state election that would have been, uh, unmatched in any other election. But for the interjection of particular councillors, I won't name the councillors and I won't address them individually, but you know who they are. And without addressing these issues, without addressing staffing, these issues will give rise again. We're riding along right now with the city council, but with two members, it's going to collapse. And it'll collapse at some point, resulting in errors in the agenda, errors in payments, errors, errors in different areas. You can't run a city clerk's office that serves eighty thousand to a hundred thousand people with two people. But it's just informative. Um, I welcome the way the budget is structured financially. I think the, again, the finance office did an excellent job. Um, there are slight shortfalls, but these are just estimates. These are just provided, uh, where, uh, shortfalls have been met by the finance department with open arms as to, you know, where you're falling short. If advertising is the issue or publishing becomes the issue, the finance department is open to those ideas. It's getting the manpower to deliver those services that are required of this budget. And that's my, my only hope is to inform you folks
Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
that these things are, are going on.
Are there any questions or comments, the clerk, on his budget, any one of the items within his purview? Mr. Rabbity.
Mr. Clerk, if you would, generally, can you talk to us about your advertising budget? And is that going to be enough for the next fiscal year?
I expect it'll be about three to four thousand dollars short, even at the fifteen thousand dollars that's provided. But again, I, I've got to commend Mr. Iannello that he has been very open and he says, well, and he, and he truly means it, let's see how this goes. Um, he's probably, and I did mention there were some increased obligations, um, but let's see how it goes. I mean, the fifteen thousand dollars, I expect it to be by supplemental or by appropriation transfer as we do every year.
Is there any way, when advertising, not that you're not efficient, but taking the cumbersome, my words, state laws and requirements of certain advertising, um, mechanisms you need to meet with everything we do throughout city government? I know we, we moved to rumble a few years back from the Tribune, I'm sure that saved a great deal of money. But are we looking at everything we advertise and, um, trying to be creative as far as what we can do online under the law? And I'll just, I'll leave that out there for discussion.
The, the, um, the advertising statute is probably only outdated by about twenty or thirty years. Um, it requires publication, for instance, for example, an ordinance, a handicap parking ordinance, to be, uh, according to the charter, seven to fourteen days in advance of the public hearing in a newspaper of general circulation, which the former city attorney has determined can be, uh, a publication that is monthly, a publication that is once every week, or a publication that is essentially accessible to the community. In addition to that, the city council has bolstered the advertising requirement to extend communication via the website. Um, it's not a state requirement yet, it may be at some point, but the state minimal requirement is in advertising within a general publication, according to the rules that the city, uh, the city, uh, the councils or the municipalities adopt. And we're meeting those minimal requirements and, and I mean that in a very positive way, in, to the minimum way possible. Um, I, I pour extensive publications. I like an inch by one inch in publication and we try to keep that size, which is equal to cost, to a minimum. The average cost for a publication, handicap parking, for example, is about between forty and fifty dollars now. Whereas previously, it had been between a hundred and fifty and two hundred dollars. So we've cut our, our, our aspect, we'll say, not, not our budget, but our aspect of approach by two-thirds. And that is because of the costs and expenses that you mentioned.
Is there, through you, Mr. Chair, is there any effort amongst your colleagues, um, to have the Secretary of State address some pretty arcane requirements that he thrusts upon you, the actual people doing the work and implementing the advertising at great cost to a community like Lawrence? I'm sure for any community, but for Lawrence, it's money we could be spending on services and elsewhere and, you know, um, you know, we have, again, um, some arcane rules that the Secretary of State tends to insist upon. Do, do, is there, is there, say clerk?
It's not the Secretary of State, but the legislature and the legislative contingent would be the best avenue in which to pursue that. But certainly to answer your question, I've seen no chatter, uh, along the, we'll say the clerk's chat lines, uh, about advertising. I guess it's, uh, accepted as a fait accompli, so to speak. Um, and the clerks approach it from that angle. Um, maybe there should be some ground swell. Um, I don't want to say that the, uh, Clerks Association statewide is somewhat ineffective, but the, um, uh, things of that nature are not, uh, high on the topic list, we'll say at this point. But I think they should be and I agree with you.
Well, I, I would just close with making an obvious statement. That is, I think, between the four of us, uh, councilors up here and yourself, we probably have a greater, um, impact with our Facebook pages than does, um, advertising, which costs thousands of dollars a month.
No.
This is all about money. This is why we're having this conversation.
No doubt, no doubt about it. No, no doubt about it.
Five of us could post for free and probably have greater penetration.
And that's why I started this conversation with, um, you know, we're only behind about twenty or thirty, maybe forty years in, in that venue.
Thank you.
Why, why it's, uh, relied upon still at great financial costs, I, I can't disagree with you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Any other comments? I'd like to welcome Mr. Piana to the meeting. Mr. Piana?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. My apologies, I was stuck in traffic today. Uh, so my, my question, I mean, I'm not gonna ask it if, uh, we've already discussed this, but, um, I, I know that there's an extra assisting city clerk, um, listed. Has that been discussed?
It has.
Okay, well, then, then I can move on.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, I think that's it. So, Mr. Clerk, anything?
Thank you for, um, allowing me to address you. Um, I would just remind the chair, uh, as a friendly reminder, please do not adjourn.
We'll recess this evening.
Thank you very much.
If I forget, please remind me. We're recessing tonight, we're not adjourning this evening.
I might try to trick you.
I'm ready, I'm ready for you, Mr. Piana. Um, okay, back to the top. Um, Mr. Iannello, feel free to, at this point, orchestrate the, the other elements of the budget and finance as you see fit, uh, in a way that is easy for us to understand and to perhaps offer questions.
I thought I'd just, uh, run through the, uh, the budget, um, starting at the beginning, uh, just to review the revenues real quick since that's on here. Uh, and the revenues generally begin on page eleven?
Can I stop you for one second? I, I, council on aging, is that one of those? I, I just, I thought that was gonna be tucked into everything else, but maybe not. And I lied, Mr. Iannello. I'm not gonna take you right now. We're going to take Ms. Velez right now.
We're big agency.
Well.
Getting there.
Go seniors, fantastic.
I know there's some changes going on and I'm, I'm, I don't know how to approach it. So perhaps now would be the time to talk about it, so.
Good evening, councilors. Martha Velez, Director of the Lawrence Council on Aging, the center.
Page? What page?
Well, page one forty-six. One forty-five, one forty-six.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
We good?
Yeah.
So my budget basically, um, is staying the same except for, um, the longevity isn't in one employee that's getting to terms of, uh, five years. And my, um, energy went up because of, um, increase in usage of the center. We needed more money, um, for the energy part of it.
In my meeting with the mayor, he was explaining to me, maybe you can go into more depth, about the change of responsibilities at the center. And as he was describing it to me, and I guess whoever else could have, may have met with him, um, there's increased responsibilities for you that would dictate a person of your skill level and the responsibilities, that that should also include an increase. So could we talk a little bit about that?
Sure. So, um, one of the things we did learn from the gas crisis is the part of the human service part of it. And, um, in speaking with all of the, um, people involved, it really is, comes to light that if we bring these human services departments together, we can create more assets amongst each other and help in making sure that, uh, quality of life, um, social determinants of health and, um, how it affects people's well-being can really be, uh, looked at by doing human services and making sure that, um, we provide programs and, um, education all the way across the board, right? And as we talk about, um, which I'll be coming in front of you for, uh, the age-friendly, age-friendly Lawrence, we're not just looking at seniors, right? We're looking all the way from birth to a hundred and how and what it takes for people to age in place and how we can change our community and look at our community in a different way, in walkability, in recreational, in serving veterans. And how do we really bring together more organizations to create one social service part of it?
In your new capacity, can you explain to me that your, your, your change of mission more specifically? Are you dealing with other, um, departments? Is there anything else coming under your overview?
So if this goes through and you, and you voted in, my understanding is that I would be, um, responsible for the recreation department, veterans services, and the council on aging.
Now, does there, I'm just curious, there needs to be reorganization, is that with ordinances? Is that going to be proposed and sent up to the council as well? Does anybody have any information on that? I don't think we can just do that just by, by this. I think there...
But I, um, there is something, I'm sure the personnel director would take care of that.
Personnel director?
That's what he said. So just to repeat, because I'm not sure if that's gonna be, so what Mr. Iannello just said is that, is that he believes the personnel director, uh, would be the person that would be, uh, the cattle, not the, the person that would be able to shepherd, uh, various ordinance proposals if there need be. And I believe there is, according to our, according to our ordinances, uh, if we're doing organization changes, that there, there are, there's laws that say who reports to who, so, um, and plus we're changing positions as well. So, uh, there's the, 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 um, the mission and the responsibilities of certain individuals, certain positions are now being changed. It's because of that, it has to be ordnanced. So I guess, as you're, as you're writing down notes for, for what's on our to-do list, that would be, will be to find out, because if we wanna hit the ground running with what Ms., if you wanna do Ms. Velez, um, I suspect that at that same track, there needs to be another track dealing with the ordinance changes. I haven't looked at the ordinance changes in a while, but I'm, if my memory serves me correctly, there are requirements, but I don't, I'm not able to answer a quiz as to what, what those specifics are. Um, so you're gonna be in charge of it, well, you know, we're, so, I guess I'll hold off those discussions until we get to the ordinance portion of it, because that's where that discussion comes in. Uh, all the monies are reflected that potential change. Obviously, your change is there. Um, and we'll deal with the others, other departments, veterans and the others you just mentioned, recreation and others on...
Under the human services, right?
Right.
So all those departments will come under the Department of Human Services?
Can you repeat what the, the Recreation Department, Council on Aging, there were two other departments?
Veteran Services.
If you look at page one forty-four, council, there's a summary.
Okay.
The Human Rights Commission, so, human assistance. Yeah, that's the contract with, um, the human assistant part of it is, um, thirty thousand dollars that we contract through, um, Home Health V and A, who provides services at the center, exercise, blood pressures, um, they're part of health fairs, and they also, um, do foot clinics and stuff like that.
Yeah, this is just a little challenging. I think we can overcome it, but it's just a little challenging because we're dealing with something that hasn't passed yet.
Right.
And it's just really weird to go down this road, because now I have questions regarding this ordinance, potential ordinance change, and we're talking about the money. It isn't a related, of course. Um, we're, we're creating a new department, Department of Human Services, that's, has never, we've never had, we haven't had that, so that's new. And then you're gonna be in charge. And I guess, questions that I have that maybe will be answered later is, are the other departments direct reports to the mayor? Are they direct reports to you? How does that play out? So, um, I guess, those questions can wait until we see how the reorg is actually submitted to the council.
I think in the explanation of the budget, am I right, Mark? It states, when he wrote the letter at the beginning, how he would restructure that. And I believe that it stated, and he, when he addressed us here, um, I think he addressed the fact that the staff would report to me. Or to the Director of Human Services, I should say.
This budget, I've established Department of Health and Human Services, this new HHS department will have the Council on Aging, the senior staff, and the senior center staff, veteran services and staff, and the Human Rights Commission and the Recreation Department and staff reporting to a new department head. This reorganization, there it is, is crucial for providing human services in Lawrence during their most critical times. All right. Well, I don't, we're not, I'm not gonna, we're not gonna take a resolution tonight on that issue, but something that we, that needs to be looked into.
Thank you.
Questions, comments, other committee members? Mr. Piana?
Um, just, just wanna add, I know that there's been some discussion that this, this would be a new department. Um, it's all, it also would be a new, um, a new position. Uh, so I'm wondering, I don't know if Mr. Iannello knows, um, has there been a job description or, um, you know, it sounds like maybe something hasn't gone through, um, this new job position hasn't gone through the committee, but I'm wondering, is there anything that we can look at now? the committee, but I'm wondering, is there anything that we can look at now, while we wait for it to go through the, because that itself would have to be, yeah, that itself would have to be an ordinance change. So, do we have anything now that we can look at?
No.
Okay.
Personnel, that's what he said.
Well, before I say thank you, I wanna, not just thank you for being here, but I wanna thank you for the job that you've done, I think that yourself and everyone in the Council on Aging, everyone in the Senior Center, and, you know, both staff and volunteers for the past year have gone over and beyond, you know, their duties. And I think that, you know, normally, you know, when we think about the Senior Center, we think about all the good work that you, that the folks there do with the seniors that go there, because I know that every time you talk to them, they, they talk about the value within the Senior Center, and I know that we've seen in the last several months, the amazing value that the Senior Center has done for this city at large. So, I wanna thank you and the rest of your staff, since I have you in front of me. So, thank you for being here, and thanks to your staff, all the good work you guys are doing.
Thank you very much, and I wanna say that it was a team effort, and it was a Laurentian effort, and it was an outsider effort. I think that thousands of volunteers showed up, thousands of people showed up to help while this gas crisis was going on. I also wanna share with you that when the gas got turned on in December, we continue, and we still continue to work with gas crisis people that have not been fully hauled yet. And from January to the end of April, we've case managed 1,242 people. That's a lot of people that we're still case managing, and I think that from that comes this, from how, I think that we've learned a lesson, that if we put it under one umbrella, and we kind of, like, work as one, and really talk to one another, we can provide more services than if we work inside those. And I believe that this, for me, is the right thing for Lawrence, because it brings us an agency where there is social services. So, the assets that I don't have, somebody else can share, the assets that they don't have, I can share with them. And if it's under one umbrella, it just makes us bigger, stronger, and better, and that's really, truly what I believe.
Yeah, and since you mentioned it, what I would say, it sounds like a, like a very interesting idea, though I do think that it'd be great to have these thoughts on paper, so we have, we know exactly, kinda what the scope of the, of this new department, what the scope of the position is. But from what I've heard from you, what I've heard from the mayor, what I am envisioning, it sounds, you know, it's, it sounds interesting. I think, you know, the next step is just to, you know, to look at whatever is on paper and hope that all this can be done before, I mean, when is the, is it next month?
July 1st, new fiscal year.
All right, so there's, there's some time, I think.
That's, that's a discussion for another day regarding the reorg, so I'm not sure they can expend the money until the reorganization is in effect, so I don't know, I don't have the information on the reorg, so. No one here does, it's a question that'll have to be put aside for the evening. At least an answer will be put aside.
So, who would have an answer to that? Because I think that's important.
According to Mr. Ryanello, he's referred us to the Personnel Department as being the authority of these, as whether or not there needs to be, or what needs to be submitted to the council to effectuate the change.
So, I think, so Mr. Chair, so my question is, I think what you said that, is that if nothing is passed before the budget, that they wouldn't be able to spend the money until something is passed? And you said that that was sort of like a question, who would have the answer to that particular question?
So, a couple things. One, the advice would come from clearly the city attorney's office on it, giving us advice, the Personnel Department, who is traditionally being the point person of reorganizations, because they're in charge of the, of posting the positions, for example, and then having the verbiage to match what is inside the ordinance, because that's what they do, that's what that office does. That's why I think Mr. Ryanello, I think he's right, the, 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 the place where that starts is Personnel, and of course, the mayor's office, because they're quarterbacking everything, right? Comes, emanates from there, and then distributes that over to the Personnel, and they work through us.
All right, thank you.
I don't hear any other questions, so I think we're good. Thank you very much, Ms. Velez, and thank you for all that you do for our city. We appreciate it, thank you. Mr. Ryanello, sorry we're back.
I thought I'd start with, again, on page 11, I think, are the revenues, or a quick synopsis of the budget, just to explain the, you know, this budget is...
11.
Page 11 is, is the very first, top half of the page is a summary of the general fund operating budget. The revenues summarized into seven or eight categories, and expenditures done the same way. So, it's a high-level overview of the budget, and as you can see, we have a proposed budget of 319 million in revenues, and that's offset by the same amount for expenditures, so the budget is balanced. Those revenues are derived at, as you've heard from the mayor, that there's no 2.5% increase this year. That is approximately $1.8 million, that, the value of that 2.5% is 1.8, almost $1.9 million. So, we made that up in this budget. We also used in this budget, the House Ways and Means, or the Senate version of the latest cherry sheet, which is a little higher than the previous year, using the final cherry sheet of the, well, we'll be waiting for the final cherry sheet before we pass the budget, but, but the latest version of the Senate, Senate version, anyway, it was the highest version that gave the School Department a little, a little more money, so this budget reflects that increase. We've actually exceeded net school spending required amount by approximately a little under $400,000, I think it's 300 and some odd thousand. Just, you know, so that's just a high-level overview, and I think, just on the bottom half of the page 11, you can see the parking fund, which is self-supporting, it's an enterprise fund, and then the airport, which you just heard from earlier, that's self-supporting. And you can see the revenues exceed the expenditures by, for the parking fund by 32,000, and that is the share of the general fund expenses that we charge the parking, and we make a transfer during the year, so the parking doesn't, so we're not subsidizing the parking in any form or fashion. We charge the parking, the airport, and the water sewer for cost of the comptrollers, the treasurer's office, and a few other administrative offices. So, that's a very high-level, entire city budget. On page 12 is a water sewer fund, but that's a very high-level overall view of the entire city budget, including its budgeted enterprise funds. On page 13, we begin a little more of the detail of the revenues, so I just wanted to just run through them briefly. You can see on the top of page 13 are a, is again, the 319,000 broken out by seven or eight revenue categories, and then below, you'll find the taxes and excise line of 81 million broken out into the details that comprise it, on the middle half of page 13. Page 14 has the detail of the charges for services, which is again at the top of page 13, and you can see the detailed revenues on page 14. On page 15, you have detailed licenses and permits, federal revenue and state revenue split out into their major components. And then on page 16, we have other, other intergovernmental revenues, miscellaneous revenues, and other financing sources that are delineated. In addition, there's a little more delineation of the parking, airport, and enterprise funds, or, and water sewer enterprise funds, so you can see a little more detail of their revenues that comprise its revenues. On page 19 is just, again, just a very high-level overview of the entire city budget, you know, with all the operating departments, and it equals page 19, 20, and 21. So, it's a high-level way to look at what the Police Department, the Fire Department, and so on, has, so I think it's views to councilors.
So, let me stop you right there, because you just went through the entire revenue. I just wanna make sure if councilors have comments or questions regarding revenues, that this would be the time to do that. And I'll lead off with a question or two on the revenue side. When Columbia Gas was in here earlier, when the President was talking about the value of the pipes, and how that would impact our, our ability to receive tax payments from that, is that reflected on page 13 under the, would it be under the personal property tax?
That's reflected on page 13 under the personal property tax, yeah. And if I could just explain, the increase in, we had a new growth estimate of roughly 3,590,000 is what's in this budget, and, and a good chunk of that was because of the work that Columbia Gas did, or accelerated. And so, our new growth is normally, you know, 1.6, 1.8 million, and this year's 3.7 million.
That's if you combine both, the property and real estate tax together, okay? And the other thing is...
It is split out in the bottom of page 13.
Right.
You can see the personal property of 8 million, and the real estate is 64 million in this budget.
And, and finally, on the 4150, the motor vehicle excise tax, we have traditionally have gotten a lot more, we've been very, very, very conservative in our figures, and, and somewhat this year, we've, we decided to actually increase that amount of money that we expect to come in by $703,000. Can you speak as to why, and what's the thinking on that?
Well, actually, that was 703,000 more than the prior budget that was submitted originally last year, but then we had a supplemental budget last year, and we increased the motor vehicle excise 703,000 to fund that supplemental budget. There was a supplemental budget filed for the School Department and for DPW, the deal with trash. So, actually, we level funded the motor vehicle excise to the prior year.
So, in, okay, now I'm looking at the actual numbers, in FY '17, we're at 5 million, FY '18, we're 5.5, and then FY '19, you said we, if you, if you, as four-point, right, we're currently in it right now, so it's, what was, what's it right now? What was the budget for?
It's actually 5,228,233, the exact same number.
Same number.
It is proposed for next year, because we did, it's 4,525, plus after we filed this budget, we filed 703,000 in July, I think the council approved a supplemental budget for the Department of Public Works, and we funded that with, well, the, the school, the school and the DPW supplemental budgets were funded through an increase in cherry sheet, because we got an increase in cherry sheet for the School Department.
But you can see why that's confusing, right? How, how we level funded it from this year, the la, next year, proposed budget, and this current year, but if you look at it, it looks as though there's a change for almost a million dollars. You can see how that might be a little...
Yeah, only because the, this is the budget that was presented at the council last year, we didn't go back and change this budget for the supplemental budgets that were passed, so I think that's why it just looks, it looks like we've increased the motor vehicle excise from 4.5 to 5.2, and the 703,000, but that 703,000 was actually, the, the final FY '19 budget was actually 5,228 for estimated revenues for motor vehicles.
Does your software have the ability to put an asterisk on there, and then put a little, little, maybe an explanation at the bottom of that page, explaining why that is?
Actually, it might be easier just to change the number, but, you know, we can change the number, but...
Okay. All right, I'm not gonna push that.
I have it inked in mine, I mean, you know, but it is, it does explain, it's not a, it's not an increase in, in motor vehicle excise, we were using the same estimate we had last year.
And can, I'm moving quickly. You mentioned you're, we're expecting to use, or we are using the Senate budget numbers. Can, do we, are we feeling as confident today as we were a couple years, a couple weeks ago, when this budget was initially submitted to us, about those Senate numbers being...
Yes, we're comfortable with those numbers, all the, all the numbers that we hear, you know, all the, the legislatures seems to be, there's a lot of impetus to change the Chapter 70 formula this year, so that would be helpful to our school system. So, all the, all the, all, all roads lead to an increase in, in school aid for communities such as Lawrence, so we felt very comfortable increasing it to the Senate Ways and Means number, and we'll see what happens to the final cherry sheet, and we'll make decisions based on that. But we have made the commitment with the, with the School Department, try and use the latest version of the cherry sheet at the time it comes out, so they can plan their budget as best they can.
Those are my big questions, I'm not gonna ask anymore this evening. On this, any other questions on revenues? Revenues, Mr. Piana?
Thank you, just a question, there's a, thank you, Mr. Chair, there's a urban redevelopment corp excise, it's an increase of 300,000, can you just explain that? On page 13?
Yeah, on page 13, those are Chapter 120, VNA, projects that we have that pay taxes and, pay, make a payment in lieu of taxes, and, and last year, we had 400,000, this year we estimated 700,000 for those, those payments.
So, why is it called urban redevelopment? Is that just the name of the chapter?
It's just an urban redevelopment corporate excise, they pay it, the corporations pay it on their corporate excise tax returns of the state, and then the state turns it over to us quarterly.
Okay. My next question. So, on, page 16, so other intergovernmental revenues, with both the civil motor vehicle infraction and the parking violation fines, right now, what was approved, so we'll just do 4772 first, was approved, FY '19 was $115,000, that's what was approved for next year, that we think we're gonna get, but as of April 29th, only 30,000 was obtained. With the parking violation fines, what we see is that out of 625,000 that was projected in revenue for FY '19, and we're still projecting that in FY '20, we've only obtained 382,000. Is that, is that normal? Because it seems like it's far, I mean, with parking violations, almost half of what was projected with civil motor vehicle infractions, it looked like it's one-fourth of what was projected.
Well, if we look at '17 and '18, we did collect 976,000 in this category, 961,000 in FY '18, and we're estimating only 875,000, all told. So, in that, in that category, we are fairly conservative with our numbers. That number, I can't, I'd have to take a look at the analysis for the civil motor vehicle infractions, but I believe we get those infractions through the courts, and, and, you know, and that could just be a delay from getting something from the courts. The parking violation fines, those are pretty fairly regular, so there's, I'm not sure if this is exactly through April 29th. It says April 29th, the day we ran this report and grabbed our information from our ERP system, but the last transaction that might have been posted might have actually been April. So, there may be, I assume there's probably three months left of parking fines that are available.
Right.
Not two, that it says here.
But, I mean, I think that, so are we assuming, even if we say it was April 1st, that these numbers are updated, instead of three months, we're saying that in four months, they're going to make 300, around $300,000 worth of fines?
No, it's only 220, 240,000, you know, 625 minus the 382.
All right, so, so in four months, so it, so it took them eight months to have 382,000 of fines, but in four months, they're gonna do whatever number you just said, 272?
Well, we'll have to see what the final numbers are, but like I said, the, the two prior fiscal years that are complete, we did have close to a million dollars in that category.
Is it possible that, for at least those two items, that you could get, you could get to me whatever the most updated numbers that the city has? For, for which one? For parking violation fines? All right, see, that, that makes more sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then, do you know for sort of the civil motor vehicle infractions?
It's 4772.
Okay. And, Mr. Ryanello, you'd have no, it could just be that that was just the luck we've had this year?
Well, if I could just go summarize all of the, these are called local receipts, when I look at all of the local receipts, just let me pull out a sheet of paper here, and we'll speak to it, but in general, we have, just one minute, my local receipts. Local receipts this year are estimated at, in total, 15 points... point one million, so in other words, when, when we put this budget together, three hundred million, uh, taxes make up seventy-four thousand, we have, uh, state cherry sheet makes up two hundred and twenty some odd thousand, and then the other largest category we have is basically local receipts, so out of the three hundred million, only fifteen million is estimated based on parking fines and, and building permits and all that, uh, motor vehicle excise tax and all that. It's kind of a, a small percentage of the total overall budget, but we do, uh, historically, we've had, uh, uh, we've, we've exceeded, I think, seventeen million in local receipts, and we're only estimating about fifteen million this year, um, so I expect, uh, in this particular FY twenties budget, using only fifteen point one million, I, I'm, I'm fairly certain we'll exceed that. We always try and be fairly, uh, uh, conservative with our numbers. These particular, uh, categories, when we put these, uh, FY twenty budget numbers together, we use, uh, the prior year, uh, and then we kinda look at what the expenditures are, or revenues are, uh, year to date, and we just look for, uh, things that are, that are generally out of whack, um, but in total, we still only have thirteen, uh, fifteen point one million, in total, of all these, uh, discretionary receipts, if you will.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Allow me the privilege of going through a rabbit hole, uh, new construction, new mill construction, or renovations, I'm thinking Pacific Mills, I'm thinking Union Crossing, thinking eighty-five Franklin Street, um, I, I would like to know if some of these are now online, and people are moving into these particular housing, I'm not sure, all the status of all the different buildings, but I, I'd like to know if, if, what kinda taxes we're bringing in with these new mill building superstructures, residences.
Um, I, I get, I'm not the person to answer that, but certainly my, our, my assessor can probably address it to a certain degree. When they, I, I guess what I could say is when they come on the, the rolls, they do get, uh, uh, when they get built, and as they get built, and Alex can explain it, but as they get built, they get assessed taxes, uh-
That's correct, so as-
Well, Mr. Assessor, how are you?
Good evening, councilors, pleasure to be here, um, so I do have a next house spreadsheet indicating the new growth, uh, broken down by categories, so the mill building conversions that you're discussing now is the residential portion of it, so for just the residential piece for FY twenty, we estimated twenty-nine million dollars of new growth, and that's attributable to the mill building conversions, and whether they're aligned one hundred percent, we have to determine if they were there and occupied, uh, not, they were built out by January one, so most of them have been, uh, I would say for the most part, about forty percent, uh, built out, um, you mentioned, um, the crossing, um, I know Salvatore's, uh, complex is built out one hundred percent, so that continues to come online, uh, we do have, and he's also a tax increment finance agreement, so to say that they're all built out, I would say absolutely not.
Right, no, I get that, um, is Van Brody Mill on Broadway, are they, are they built, and then, I'm not sure if they're being built out, does that mean residences?
Correct.
Do you have that kinda breakdown, that kind, to that specificity?
That particular one, I would have to pull out the property record card, and that would definitely indicate with a percentage complete as of January one, and if they're on the tax rolls, one hundred percent.
Five Franklin?
I can get you all that.
Are they on five?
Five Franklin is not, that is still, uh, being built out, and, uh, a percentage of it being complete, but I know we reclassified it from mill buildings to residential.
Mill buildings to residential.
They just hit a different class.
And are they, is this a, a, because, if I understand it correctly, there's different tax rates depending on what their classification is, so if it's a, uh, if it's a low and moderate income housing, it's different than a, a market rate housing, for example, versus a forty B, so, um- On, so we haven't, that hasn't been built out, so they're not paying any, well, they're paying something, but not what they could be paying, because there's nobody living there?
Correct.
Okay. Monarch's Lofts, uh, I think Phase Two, is that, is that now built out?
That will be built out for twenty twenty, correct.
It's going to be built out, but it's not built out now?
No, but we will be out in the field assess, reassessing that property, so-
Do, do we know which category that's in? Is that a low and moderate income housing?
That is market.
Market rate. Pacific Mills?
Uh, that's, uh, low.
Low, it, is that, that's built out, though, cause I-
That is built out, correct.
Right, I met someone who's living there now.
Yes.
That's low, so that we're not getting as much as we could be getting for this market rate?
Correct, and there's been arguments with the, uh, market rate apartment buildings like these, uh, Verbal Walk, and they're comparing their assessment to a Pacific Mills, and there's a gap, and obviously, um, La Poli will file an appeal for his overvaluation, but we indicated to him that he's got market rent at twenty-two hundred dollars a month, while the Pacific Mills is much, much, much lower, so there's not a comparable that he could have used, and we approved that valuation, and the appeal was denied.
Give me a taste, cause I don't wanna hijack this entire meeting, I'll just give me a taste of what they're paying at Pacific Mills, how much money, do we have an idea? Cause this is new money, right? This is, this is new growth, right?
New growth in valuation dollars, value, I'd say about eight million dollars in valuation, I, I would just put that number out there, I haven't looked at the property record card in quite some time, we're going through a revaluation now, but, uh, compared to like a Sal La Poli, at, one of his units at twenty million.
So let me do this, I'm, let me back off the question, because we have a full meeting, and I don't wanna, I could, we, you and I, I could, I could ask you questions all evening on this, cause it's, uh, is it, for me, anyway, it's, it's, I like to get these answers, but if you can just give me some stuff, if you already have a front page, if you've got something simple to, to read and understand, I don't need like a, I don't need like ten page, I just need something simple, who's, who's online, who's about to get online, how much they're paying, how much they will be paying, and whether it's, uh, what class are they, a forty B, or like forty, whatever, whatever, low and moderate income, market houses, market rates, that, that would be helpful. Does anybody else wanna have a copy of that, too? You don't feel like you'd have to, but if I get one?
Yes.
You can send it to the entire committee, they can do it as, as they wish.
Yep.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vega, appreciate it, I'm sorry about that, Mr. Iannella. Any other questions on revenues? No, we'll move on. Last, we're talking, you're talking in broad terms about the entire budget, and they, the thirty thousand beat up. Expenditures.
Uh, so, so I just, uh, kinda raised, uh, just the pages, uh, page nineteen just has a summary of the entire city budget, uh, which I thought would be helpful to the city councilors, but to get to, uh, the agenda, we reviewed the revenue review, so I'll, I'll start with the budget finance division, uh, which is on page twenty-eight. That's all the departments that fall under my purview, so the office of budget finance, the controller, the purchasing, the IT, the assessor's office, the treasurer, and the tax collector. Just on, on the, uh, page twenty-nine, in, in my budget, really the only change is, uh, a salary increase for, for myself, um, I haven't had a salary increase since I got here in two thousand and eleven, um, uh, we have a couple of different spots under my, um, uh, my direction where I've, I've proposed, and I think, uh, the overseer mentioned it, uh, the other night, we have, uh, very savvy and technically proficient, uh, uh, people in the finance division, and, uh, if we don't pay them, we're gonna lose them. Uh, we did just lose a, a treasurer after a couple of years, uh, she was really, really great, uh, we have a new treasurer, Pearl Ortiz, so I'm expecting a lot out of her, um, uh, but, you know, once we, once we get, we can get people on board, but we just can't seem to, uh, keep them on board if we can't pay them, so there are some, uh, some salary increases, uh, planned in here, uh, we do have a, a professional consulting firm, uh, actually doing the studies, and we're not going up to the recommendations of the, of the consultant, we're just trying to get something in here for this year, so we did have, um, a, a few increases for the, um, uh, finance director, the, uh, the comptroller, the, uh, the payroll director, uh, actually, the personnel director, um, Frank's budget, uh, an increase for him as well, he's highly underpaid, um, and, uh, a little, uh, had an allocation in here for the assessor's office, and, um, uh, so I think that, uh, I think that covers most of the increases that we have.
You're talking right there, I, I'm not gonna drill on this, if you just sent, I know you did some comps on this, if you just sent us the comps electronically, that'd be helpful, cause I'm sure somebody would be saying, why are you paying this? And you say, well, comparatively speaking, this is why. That's all, thank you.
Uh, so in, in my budget, in my budget line item on page twenty-nine, there's really no changes from the prior year, just the salary increase, uh, skip to the comptroller's division on page thirty-one, uh, and if you look on page thirty-two, we do have a, an increase in pay for the comptroller and the payroll director, uh, those are two, uh, individuals I can't live without, um, other than that, the budget's fairly, uh, all the, all the line items that, you know, office supplies and so forth are flat. Uh, let's see, uh, running quickly through the purchasing department, oh, by the way, I have all my division heads here, if there are any questions about any department that you'd like to have, there's an expert here.
That would be helpful, I mean, many of these people, I haven't interacted with many, I haven't, and just to put a name with the face sometimes, can you do that as a courtesy?
Love to introduce them if you-
That would be really helpful.
That would be great.
That'd be great, thank you.
So, uh, if I could just, uh, starting with the comptroller, you know, um, Ramona Sabalos is our comptroller, she's sitting here with a laptop on her knees, um, and we have Donna Coles, our payroll director, Donna, if you could just stand up, um, again, these are people I, I can't live without, uh, let's see, I have, uh, I have Rita Brusso in the back, um, our purchasing director, Rita, Pearl is, Pearl is next to, our new treasurer is next to, Pearl Ortiz is next to Rita Brusso, uh, you know, Alexi Vegas, yeah, let's see, uh, and I have Louis Santiago, IT director, I think everybody, that's everybody in the room. Oh, Marielle's our new budget analyst, I'd like to introduce you to her, we just hired a budget analyst a couple of weeks ago, and, uh, some really, uh, it'll certainly help us with some of this analysis work and, and making the, uh, budget a little prettier in the future, so those are, those are my people.
Thank you.
And they're, they're really outstanding, uh, so I just kinda ran through the comptroller's budget really quick, because there really isn't much of a change there, other than those two, uh, pay increases I just mentioned, um, uh, I do have a, uh, in the purchasing department, uh, a very flat, level-funded budget in the purchasing department, I have a, uh, in the IT's budget, there's, uh, I can ask, uh, Louis to, uh, explain any changes, but the IT budget is a, a fairly large budget, um, because that houses all our software, our ERP software is roughly around four hundred thousand a year, uh, there's all sorts of, uh, I, all the copiers and, and printers, uh, are paid for, uh, out of, uh, out of Louis's budget, um, so there's, uh, telephone, telefax, and the other purchase services are, are in the lease payments of the copiers, that's a, a large chunk of money, uh, we do, do, uh, have employee training, uh, employee training out of this budget is generally munis training, sure.
Hi, Mr. Chuck, so you were gonna say that Mr. Louis, Mr. Santiago may, may have a few comments, I, I, I think that there may be some interest in, among the committee-
Yep.
Of all these issues, but tech being what it is, it's so focused, we're so centralized on it, I'd like to know a little bit more about what's going on, money's being spent, what can we expect, that kinda stuff?
Okay, come on, come on up, Louis can explain his budget here.
Good evening, councilors.
Evening.
Louis Santiago, IT director, so like Mark said, it's a level-funded budget, um, if you see some changes on the telephony and the other purchases, it's because, um, we're picking up some lines for the police department, for their iPads on the cruisers, also, uh, on December, this coming December, um, Verizon is not gonna, uh, support the basic phones anymore, so we have to upgrade to smartphone, all of them, so that's why you see it's not increased, we just, um, um, just switched the numbers from, from all the purchases to the telephony. Any questions?
I do. So, uh, it's may not be on this page, but it is IT-related, uh, earlier this evening, we were aware of the hiccups with the, with, with the system, with the television systems, for example, is that something that comes under your, um, purview, or somebody else's?
Um, most of the, most of the television system here on the city council is managed by the city council itself, I do try to help them when they need me, let's say, when they wanna put, when they wanna put the Facebook Live, you know, I tell them what to buy about the budget, but out of my budget, nothing that has to do with the channel here, with the TV comes out of my budget.
Since you're probably not gonna be here, we're talking about the city council budget, I just, I guess I could ask you those, would it be okay to ask some questions now regarding technology as it-
Please.
As it impacts us, so, um, talk to us about the, the cable, if you wouldn't mind, if you have that information, as to what's going on with the cable, why are we having such challenges with it, why are we changing the, the system, can you talk a little bit about that, because there's a lot of, there is some frustration among people who may not be able to access it, and things are, seem to be in flux, talked about that a little bit?
I personally don't have any information about the cables, cause we do have a public, um, a public hearing on that, I think it's next month, at the senior center, that people can go and see what they have to say about the changes, but it's basically that their contract, it's already, it's almost aspiring with the city, and of course, they want to renew it, you know, and they wanna have a public hearings on, they're just gonna tell the people what they're gonna do, and people's gonna just make a recommendation on what we should do, but I never been on that, on a, I think it's every ten years that they do it, so I never been on that cable hearing.
Webpage, uh, and YouTube, uh, is that something that's in, again, is that in your belly, or under your purview?
Yes, the website, we did, uh, we did upgrade it about three years ago, we do get a free upgrade in a year, it's not an upgrade, I mean, a redesign, so if we decided to redesign the website, um, we can do it in a year, but right now, we just focusing, focusing on getting updated, because it's fairly new, it's been there for like two years now, and now it's kinda fully upgraded, and now the city council is live on YouTube, and I was just talking to John, and telling him that we need to find more equipment to make that better, and out, and also trying to find equipment to make it mobile, you know, that I could go to probably neighborhood meetings, or go to, or go to just public meetings and have that live, too, so I, I was talking to John, and asking if we, what kind of equipment we could get, either my budget, that will come from my budget, and then just have them, that doing that mobile, um, live feed, um, or just any meeting, any public meeting.
And if I understand you correctly, right now, we're, we're burdened, if we're gonna be doing anything, uh, with the cameras, it has to be here, what you're suggesting is we can go elsewhere?
Yeah, we, you-
Every meetings or outside meetings, whatever it is, we can do it.
Yeah, just any, anywhere you, you, you have a public meeting, we could go and, and broadcast that live, that's something I'm working on with John.
Would that be coming out of the capital improvement budget?
Um, it's not that much to come out of the capital improvement budget.
That is something that would be part of the negotiations, uh, any equipment that we need for our local cable access TV, I'm sure Verizon and Comcast would certainly be open to that for the contract renewal, so it's something that, in meetings that I've had, uh, preliminary meetings, it's something that they're very open to, so it wouldn't come out of anybody's budget, I'm sure.
I'll step back, right now, while we have Mr. Santiago here, Mr. Abdur.
Thank you, Councilor Plant, I would like to actually piggyback on that and, uh, continue this conversation with Mr.'s Santiago and Iannella, if, as Mr. Santiago says that the television and the cable is the city councils to manage, does that mean we need to have, I guess I'd direct this to you, Mr. Iannella, does this mean we need to direct our president to, uh, join the negotiation with you, because our broadcast, both external of this building and within this room, is absolutely horrible, and I mentioned homelessness an hour ago, and, and I hear a lot about that, this is right up there with the top two or three complaints, especially amongst seniors and those that can't get down to City Hall, is how horrible our transmission is, and if it's ours, if we own it, if the city council is responsible for it, then we should probably be right alongside you in these negotiations, shouldn't we?
Well, well, I think certainly, uh, someone should put in a request for any equipment that's needed, maybe the, uh, your guys can work with Louis to put a, a, a list of equipment, or some, some requested needs, and, and we should, uh, when the negotiations start, be ready to put that on the table, but, uh, I'm sure, uh, that'd be a discussion with the, with the mayor, uh, you know, generally, when you get in these renegotiation talks, you, uh, you know, I'm fairly certain we'll probably end up having, having to hire an expert, uh, on our side to help us with this negotiation, cause they are kinda technical, but things, things like this, such as the, uh, uh, cable access TV is generally, uh, taken care of during the contract renewal talks.
So I, I would suggest to you, I, I know you've only been here within the last decade, but it's been horrible, uh, our relationship has never been great, and it seems like the, we always get the raw end of this deal, and so I am just a little curious, because, um, I know we're getting a little bit off the budget here, but whether it's a capital expenditure in the next SIP, or through this negotiation, or through his operating budget, we need to improve this, we need to, we need to, the nine of us here at this table represent eighty-five thousand people, and as you can tell by- as you can tell by, there's absolutely not one citizen in this room that's not being paid to be here. They're watching it at home, or they're listening to it on YouTube or on the Internet. And part of that is that they can't watch it on TV, it's just, it's not good. So, I encourage you, so, let me actually press you on this. Is the transmission of these meetings, both the hardware and the actual transmission, is that the responsibility of the city council, or is that the responsibility of the city?
Are you talking about Comcast or like Facebook online? Or YouTube?
I wasn't specifying. I wasn't specifying, so it is, each one is a different?
Yeah, because I manage the online part of it, which is the YouTube and the Facebook, that does come out of, the feed comes out of the Comcast equipment, well, the cable equipment, but the artificial signal and Internet and all that, we provide that. The signal that Comcast gives to the customers outside, that's just on Comcast's feed, that's why you see it not good. But like me, I was watching on YouTube all the time, because it looks clear and it sounds good, but in terms of what the signal is on the TV, I have no control over that.
Well, I was about to give you some praise and credit, because yes, most of the constituents I speak to that watch it over the Internet say that the quality is there. But many of the seniors in particular watch it on Channel twenty-two.
Yeah, we get the feed directly from the council and put it on YouTube and Facebook, but when the feed hit Comcast, that's when it loses some quality on audio and video. Basically, the cable network.
All right, I will, because I'm getting away from the budget, I will cease my comments here. I would just encourage Mr. Iannello to have a conversation with Mr. Vasquez, and I for one will be having a conversation with him.
Mr. Piano.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to follow up on those comments, and I would say, Councilor, do I, I don't necessarily think that this is going outside of the budget, because I think it's a piece that's missing from the budget. And I think us articulating that point is sticking to the mission of tonight's meeting. Now, you know, I will say, Mr. Iannello, that when you mentioned that if the city council has any requests of things that are needed regarding this item, that we should push it forward. From the moment that I've been on the city council, this has been a major concern of everyone at least sitting here. I will say that I get, you know, every, I'm trying to think, has there been a meeting where someone does not send me an email or a text message saying that they can't hear us, or that something's going on with the screen, their screen at home, and I'm trying to think of how many meetings in total I haven't gotten those messages. Now, I understand from, you know, from us being here, that it sounds like, from the moment I stepped here, everyone was saying that this is a city council responsibility, but city council doesn't have the power of adding funds to anywhere. We also don't have an IT director within our own department. Now, if the IT director was under the city clerk or was under the city attorney, then that would be our purview, right? Or if we had control over allocating our own funds to our own budget, then, you know, that would be under our own purview. But as we don't have the expertise to figure out, you know, what it is that we need, right? You guys do, the administration as a whole does have the expertise. I would think that the administration, everyone, you know, somebody within the city would figure out what is it that we need, and then allocate it in this budget, if that's the case. And if the case is that it's not something that can be allocated in the budget, if the case is that it's something that we have to have a discussion with Comcast and Verizon, then I think it's important for that to be clear. Because if the issue is that we need some type of material or some type of equipment to improve the service, then I think those are two different things.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with the issues that you have, I'm not a technical expert, I'm the finance director, but if there is some technical things that can be arranged, Louis is a good resource to help with that. But I hear your concerns, if there's, I just have never had a budget request for the cable access TV. So, I just encourage the city councilors, or maybe the council, through the council president can ask for some help with this, and we can assign Louis or some other consultant to try and help to find out what the needs are of that cable channel. I'm just not familiar with it.
If you're not familiar with it, I mean, it's fine, if you're not familiar, I mean, it is what it is, I understand it's not your expertise.
Yeah, I don't know if Louis, I don't, we don't do TV.
I would just say that, so, Mr. Iannello, I mean, you're saying you're not familiar with it, I think that's fine, so I'll move on. But I would think that this is an issue that I thought that everyone was familiar with this issue, but if folks aren't, then you know it, I will put myself at fault at not speaking out more on this issue and ensuring that everyone within, you know, City Hall understood what was going on, and maybe, you know, something would be done. So, I think that, I'll make that my homework assignment. Thank you.
Mr. Chapp.
I think you understand the frustration, Mr. Iannello, that you're hearing from my colleague. And what is a little, your title is Finance Director, but I think we all see you as the Chief Financial Officer for the city. And when a CFO assembles a budget, it addresses the city's priorities. And I guess, we're just a little frustrated that your answers are sticking only to the finance, only to the dollars, and not the underpinnings, not the underpinnings and the policy implications of what you're doing with those numbers.
Well, I am the Finance Director, the Chief Financial Officer for the city, and we do put this budget together, but it's not my policy, it's the mayor's policy and the city councillor's policy is what we try and put together here. So, but, you know, but if there's some additional funds that are needed, there's some additional resources that are needed to help this, I just can't imagine, you know, the mayor and the council not supporting something like that. We just need, it's the first I'm kind of hearing of some capital needs in the council chambers.
But, so that's, through you, Mr. Chairman, that's the frustration. It's as long as you've been here, we've been talking, I remember my first term in two thousand and eight, nine, we were supposed to get an electronic system in here for people to be able to see how votes work and how things work. Okay, that never happened. I know for a fact, you're here almost every Tuesday night, and I give you significant credit for that. I mean, to sit here and deal with this every Tuesday night is admirable. You know, we constantly are critical of this audio system in this room, and the video issues we're having are long-term and often spoken of. And it's not a, it's not an ego thing on any of our part, it is a service to the people we serve that are getting frustrated. And I just, I don't want to beat you up about it, but I would just suggest, when we assemble a budget, it's the city's priorities, and that is why, and you're the one who has to come down every Tuesday and speak to us. Eighty percent of the time, it's you, so you're the face of the financial and policy items that are before us. So, if we're going places that you don't feel comfortable, I would suggest, you know, we bring those department heads or subject matter experts that can address these items.
Well, I think that you just took the words out of my mouth. I think we need a subject matter expert, Louis isn't one, I'm not one, I'm not sure if one of the guys is a subject matter expert, so it may not even be them either. We may have to bring in a subject matter expert to look at the video and so make recommendations of what we need to make it work to the council's satisfaction. I just don't know what that, whether that involves ten thousand dollars or a million, but I imagine it's probably not that expensive to provide some additional resources, but I just don't know what those resources are, and Louis is kind of nodding with me, he doesn't know either. He's not a camera guy. With the network and computer stuff, we can certainly help, it's just the camera equipment that's just not something we're familiar with. It sounds like we need a subject matter expert for that, unless one of the guys in the council office is the subject matter expert and can make a request for some equipment.
So, one of the guys, through you, Mr. Chairman, they are, as best I understand, are contractors, and there's issues there, you know, they, I won't go down that path right now, but they're very good at what they do, they're very knowledgeable, they don't have a seat at the table. And I believe now, with the investments we're making citywide on the capital side, and the work that you're doing, Louis, on the operating side, that now's the time for that conversation. I think we heard my colleague, Mr. Piano's frustration, we, this isn't new, it seems like this might be a good time, maybe not this conversation, because we've got way off, I think, well, Mr. Piano, I think, actually corrected me, and rightfully so, that it is, it is something we should be talking about. So, here's at least a few people's notification that we would like to see change on behalf of our constituents to broadcast this media in a better way. And whether it's the operating budget, the capital budget, whether it's the two gentlemen in the other room that are technical experts, they don't have a seat at the table, I'd be comfortable with either one of them giving input to whoever's making capital decisions along with you or operating with Louis. But it's important, it's important to our constituents. You know, the past several weeks, we've been broadcasting this without audio. So, unless they have hearing impaired devices or, you know, I'm being facetious, because all they're getting is a video feed and no audio. I believe tonight was, I believe through Louis's goodwill and John's, that we might be back online. So.
I'm rambling. Mr. Chairman. I think that's it on the IT stuff. Before you take off, Mr. Santiago, on a personal level, I want to thank you very much for, whenever I made phone calls over to your office, you've been extremely helpful every time, and it's not going unnoticed and it's not unappreciated, so thank you so much for your assistance, I just want to publicly say that. I think we're good, Mr. Santiago, after that, yeah, at that bit.
Thanks to Louis.
No, Mr. Iannello, as you were, you were moving on.
On page thirty, yeah, I just wanted to move to page thirty-seven is the assessor's budget, and again, this operating budget is pretty much status quo from the prior year, but, and there is a, on page thirty-nine, a hundred and seventy-five thousand, it's the same as the prior, it's a little increase from the prior year for the, doing the annual, every five years, we need to revalue our property, so we do revaluations of our property every year, and we use RRC Company to do that. And Alex works with the RRC to do those valuations, and that's what the hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars is needed for, so that's a contractual arrangement. Let's see, on page forty begins the treasurer's budget, and again, per the mayor's instructions, our budgets are fairly level-funded, other than collectively bargained increases. So, on page forty-one, forty, forty-one, forty-two is the collector's side of the operation, and again, their staff supported there, along with the operating budget for that department. The collector treasurer's office also has the, we pay for the postage machine for all of City Hall, the lease for the postage machine and all the postage, just to make it easy to load the machine instead of having all the departments have a machine themselves. So, we've been, that's customary since I've been here. That's pretty much the budget and finance division and its offices in a nutshell. I know I kind of did a quick review, but again, I have all department heads here in case you have any specific questions. I do see the fiscal overseer's budget on here, so I can speak to it, there's only, that's on page seventy-three, and there's no change here, he just has a fifty thousand dollar allocation for just consulting services in case he needs them for his duties. There was a thirty-five hundred travel voucher, which he's never used, and it was in last year's budget, but, so I took it out this year.
Mr. Iannello, the overseer, I believe, said that if we get through this budget, at least I've heard that, I think I heard that through him, that he would no longer be a part of our fabric of our community anymore.
Yes.
As directly as he has been. So, what will happen to this money? When would that take place? I mean, if, do we, can you add a little more detail to that?
Well, you know, he did say that if the budget's passed and we end the year the way we have in the last several years, we end the year in good stead, which I certainly expect that to happen. And, you know, it sounded like very shortly, maybe in a few months' time, we usually set the tax rate and close the year October timeframe. So, if he's, he's alluding to that timeframe, and if everything comes through his office, there's a lot of reporting we do with his office, people in his office, and after those people report, that probably, I'm fairly certain, I'm ninety-nine percent certain that they're not going to find a problem, that the fiscal overseer did recommend that they might leave. When that does happen, as he alluded to in his comments the other night, there is a position, Chief Administrative and Financial Officer, that kicks in. That position steps into, basically steps into the shoes of the fiscal overseer, for all intents and purposes, and that person would also need some consulting, so that's where I would, if this, if he does step aside, that fifty thousand will probably be used by the Chief Administrative and Financial Officer, just in case there is any studies that are needed or any consulting work needed to make sure the city's run fiscally sound.
All right, so, we're not going to see any savings of fifty thousand, in other words.
You may, because if it's not spent, it's saved, but, you know, it needs to be allocated, and there is a provision in the Mass General laws that the CAFO gets a budget and it has to be approved and so forth, so.
I don't have any questions on those intermediates, but someone else may. Mr. Piano.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Iannello, so on page seventy-four, you might have said this, and I just missed it, for professional services for the fiscal overseer, in FY nineteen, fifty thousand was allocated, we've spent seventy-three, can you let us know why?
There was some purchase orders from the previous year that were carried over, so that's what, it looks like it's overspent, but it's not. Those are just encumbrances from the prior year. And there were some, he did have a couple of consulting contracts with the Collins Center, and there could have been some others in there, I don't recall off the top of my head, but I do know there's some work with the Collins Center for doing some studies in the city.
Okay. My next question is with, it's on page thirty-seven and thirty-eight, there's twenty thousand that was allocated as a stipend.
Oh, yes.
I see that that's new.
Yep. That's for, that, the chief assessor is, and the assessors are part of a union, but we do recognize that we need to put something in the budget for the chief assessor for the additional responsibilities that he has, so we're including an item in the budget in case we can come to some agreement with the union to make an adjustment to that salary, because that's, the chief assessor, as you can see, the salary is seventy-two thousand, that's far below, far below what he should be making in other communities around here.
Thank you, Mr. Iannello. So, I'm not arguing that part, so I guess my question's just informational, for every other, at least I, usually when a position's, when a position's being increased, you would see it in the position. What I see with the chief assessor is only a two hundred and seventy dollar change. Are you saying that the stipend for twenty thousand, is that the change that's going to happen, or are you saying that right now that there's discussion with the chief assessor's union?
There's a, the chief assessor is in a union, so our, we have to negotiate over the table to increase somebody's salary, so I put this as a placeholder in the budget, so I'd have the funds available to handle those talks. So, I'd have to have some money in the budget for that.
Okay, so it could be more than that, it could be less than that?
Right.
Okay, all right, thank you.
One more thing, I'm sorry, Mr. Piano mentioned something. You're, we're going through this significant Uh, one more thing, I'm sorry. Mr. Piano mentioned something. You're, we're going through this significant review of, of various salaries. And if I heard you correctly, you just mentioned that, uh, that our chief assessor is tremendously, uh, underpaid. Since we're dealing with budget and finance, and he's part of the budget and finance team, if the question is begged, then why can't we include him as being more fairly paid?
Uh, well, well, I have. It's just that, uh, that position is in a union versus the other positions which are not. So I have to negotiate that with the union before I put a, uh, salary request in there, that's all. So this was a placeholder, so at least I have the funds available to enter into those negotiations.
Okay.
Uh, let's see, I've, uh, the next on the list is the debt service, so I, so I can talk about debt service. Uh, that's on page one fifty-seven. And on the appendix A, uh, is the, uh, detail of the, of the debt that we have outstanding and the debt payment. So if I just go to, uh, uh, page one fifty-eight has, uh, again, just some detail, the principal and interest piece, uh, and it's thirteen point four million. Uh, and on P, appendix A, which is the last page in your budget book, that has the detail of the, uh, debt service that's outstanding and, uh, the principal and interest payments due. And what we have here is, uh, we break it out by school and general government. Uh, it's the same schedule that the council's familiar with seeing. Um, and then we have, uh, because we have a capital improvement plan in place, we do have, uh, a, uh, financial policy that says we will increase our, uh, uh, debt service as a percentage of net general fund revenues uh, from six percent to seven percent. So in this budget here, we have, uh, six and a half percent. Uh, so we're almost there. Another couple of years, we'll be at the full seven percent. Uh, and so the, uh, capital improvement plan, financial policy, uh, to, to fund that at, at the level that we need to, it's one point four million, in addition to the outstanding debt.
Now tomorrow, we're going to be talking a little bit about Museum Square, so that's going to be factored in here somehow.
Uh, Museum Square would be a, um, uh, a, you know, a bond authorization, and that would be, uh, we'd have to factor that into the capital improvement plan, uh, which we're kind of working on now, uh, and factor that one in there. So that's, might, might have to bump a couple of projects. Uh, we'll have to see what the debt service will be like on that and what the actual, uh, repair costs come in at. I know it's estimated at four, four million, but.
But we're going to see this, if it all goes according to plan, we'll see this next year in the budget.
It could, it could be next year in the budget. If, if we sell the bonds, it might be the year after. Because usually when you borrow, it takes a year, maybe even, uh, two years before you'll see it in the, in this schedule.
All right, I'll, I'll drop back, because we'll talk more about that tomorrow.
Um, so that's, uh, that's the debt service of, uh, of thirteen point five million roughly, um, in a nutshell. And then a couple of other things that we, I have on, uh, on this schedule here, and I might as well, back, they're in the back of your budget book, is employee benefits, um, which is on page one sixty-one, or a summary on page one sixty-one, and the detail is on page one sixty-two. Uh, so primarily, this is our pension assessment, um, and our health insurance, and our dental, and, um, unemployment, and Medicare. Um, those are primarily the, uh, the benefits that are covered in this line item, but it's, uh, uh, on page one sixty-two, they total twenty-six point five million. And then there's, uh, uh, some of the things that Frank, uh, Personnel Director Frank Benet mentioned earlier. There are some things for, um, workers' compensation, uncompensated absences, and reserve for, uh, injured in the line of duty. Uh, those are also in, in this category. There's, uh, seven hundred and seventy thousand budgeted for those line items. And then we, uh, uh, have a plan to request, uh, we, we used a hundred thousand for each of these, uh, reserve funds last year for free cash, and we're going to supplement those reserve funds with another hundred thousand this year. So we can start building up those reserves in case, uh, you know, there are any, uh, outstanding claims, uh, or, or ongoing claims. Uh, so it's trying to, we're trying to, uh, put something in every, in every annual budget and also supplement it, so we can start building up reserves uh, for those three major categories. So just a brief review of the, uh, pension calculations, nine point seven million. That's the, uh, the actual assessment for FY twenty, um, and, uh, for the city share of the, uh, pension plan. The pension plan is actually, the total, uh, payment is roughly eighteen million, and half is paid by us and half is paid by the school department, pretty much. Um, unemployment, we, a hundred and fifty thousand. We haven't had a lot of, uh, claims in, in unemployment, but we always budget that, uh, that same amount. Uh, oh, the non-contributory pension, those are for, uh, it's fifty-three thousand. Uh, those are for pensioners who retired or had worked for the, uh, city sometime before nineteen thirty-seven or thirty-nine, I think is the magic date. So there's very few of those retirees left, but there's a, a few that we pay, and that's non-contributory retirees, which are paid directly by the city and not by the retirement system.
So it's not, I know. There are still people that, who worked for the city before nineteen thirty-nine.
Uh, they worked, right. Worked in, in thirty-seven or thirty-nine, that, and so a lot of them were teenagers. And then a lot of these people are spouses of, of the deceased, so they're surviving spouses, so.
Okay. Interesting sign note.
Uh, Medicare is six hundred and fifty thousand. It, it's one in, one point four or five percent of the, uh, wages paid to employees. And, uh, so every year, that number kind of goes up as more employees are, uh, applicable to that and the wages increase. Uh, fifteen point three million is our estimate, which is same as last year for, uh, group insurance. Last year, we, uh, we, uh, we budgeted, uh, I added to the budget a little bit more than, than what we estimated. And that amount that, uh, we're, we're still hitting some, some great numbers, so, uh, we're going to level fund that budget. We still think we have, uh, uh, plenty of room in that budget for, uh, making our GIC payments. Uh, they're estimated approximately, uh, fourteen point two million this year, maybe fourteen point five. Uh, and, uh, and our estimates for next year will still be, uh, fifteen point three will still cover us. Uh, let's see, dental, six hundred and twenty-five thousand. That's the employer's share of, uh, the dental that employees have. And that's a, a slight decrease from the prior year, but it seems to be on target for this year. So that's the, um, employee benefits. There's also risk management on here, which is on the next page, one sixty-three. And that's basically, um, auto insurance and property insurance. Um, so on page, uh, one sixty-four, there's three hundred thousand we have in for auto insurance, which is level funded from last year. The reason why we were able to level fund that from last year is, uh, we made a thorough review of all our equipment, um, and disposed of a lot of, uh, uh, vehicles and, and equipment that were not in use, and we, we tracked them all down, and we, uh, we eliminated them from our policy. So that savings, along with the increase in premiums, we were able to level fund the, uh, um, the auto insurance.
Stop it for just one second. So I, had a revenue, uh, revenue stream as well? These, these vehicles that are no longer any good, or are they just?
Uh, well, no, we did, uh, we, any vehicle or any, any obsolete equipment has to be disposed of by the purchasing director. So, uh, we, we auction off anything that we have, uh, whether it's a desk or a vehicle or a truck or a tractor or whatever it may be. They're all, uh, handled and, uh, and disposed of, uh, hopefully for some, for some money. And, and we have received, uh, uh, in the last couple of years, quite a bit of money from some of our equipment that is determined junk by department heads, but it does have some value.
Can you real quickly just tell me what number that is in the revenue sign?
Um, I'm not, uh, I don't have a revenue item on here, but I know, um, I can ask Rita to put together an approximate of, of what she's disposed of in the last few years. You know, she, she would probably know it off the top of her head, but I know, uh, every once in a while, there's, uh, uh, some stuff that is junk. We take pictures of it. There's a, a firm that actually comes in, takes pictures of it, puts it on a website, and, uh, and they get, uh, they, they get some money for it. Uh, sometimes a thousand bucks, sometimes a couple thousand dollars for stuff that we thought was junk and was worthless. So. I'm sure it's in one of these line items. I just don't know which, which, uh, object code it would be, but I'll ask Rita.
If you don't mind, it's one of, it's just a point of interest. It just piqued my curiosity. It's not a make or break item at all. All right.
Uh, so let's see, I'm trying, I got risk management, I think, oh, other financing uses is on here, so let me cover that one as well. And that is on page, uh, one sixty-six, and there's just two items on here. Uh, that's the, uh, of note. Uh, there's a million fifty-one eight oh one, which is the, um, that's the chapter fifty-eight reserve requirement, or as we refer to it as pay-go capital. That's the required amount per our, uh, uh, legislation that, uh, that, uh, chapter fifty-eight of the, of, uh, the Acts of two thousand and ten requires us to put a, um, a percentage of our previous year's tax, two and a half percent of our previous year's tax levy and, and a reserve fund and use it for ongoing pay-go capital. Pardon me. We've, uh, we've been using, uh, uh, when, when I first got here, we were using, uh, free cash to fund a hundred percent of that. Uh, and, uh, and in the last, uh, five years or so, we've been, uh, using, um, we went from a hundred percent to seventy-five, to fifty, to twenty-five. And this year, a hundred percent of that is now budgeted in the general fund. We're not using free cash for that. And that was one of the, uh, things that the overseer asked us to do. The other thing in this line item is eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand. Excuse me, pardon me, um, uh, which is, uh, an, an amount we're adding to our salary reserve for, um, for, on, uh, for contracts that have not been settled. Uh, we have, uh, in, in our reserve fund to date, we have ru- roughly one point two million. Uh, so this eight hundred thousand will get us up to a two million reserve, um, uh, which is, uh, approximately what we'll, what we're anticipating. Hopefully, it'll be enough to cover our, any outstanding, uh, union contracts. And that's the same amount that we budgeted last year. We've been setting aside, uh, money annually, uh, in our, in our operating budget so that we build it into our base, so we could, uh, uh, pay these wages, and it's not a big surprise in the city's budget. Uh, it's always a surprise, uh, but it's not a surprise that we're, we're not able to manage. And that, again, that was, uh, uh, something that fiscal overseer felt very strongly about, and, uh, and, uh, so we've been, we've been keeping to that course.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Ramblin'. Does that include public safety?
Yes. Yes, yes. Primarily public safety, because many of our contracts are settled at least through nineteen. So in, in FY twenty, we have, uh, most of our contracts are, are out of a contract for FY twenty, so we have, uh, an increase for that, uh, for those unions and for the public safety, along with that, uh, uh, reserve from prior years that we've, we've been putting in for some public safety.
We wouldn't expect two million dollars to cover, should they come to an agreement, would we?
It, it would be, uh, that's the amount for all of the unions. So there's, uh, you know, there's a, uh, the outstanding contracts that that would cover is, uh, police unions, uh, there's a year of a fire union that's, uh, outstanding, uh, and then, uh, all the rest of the unions for FY twenty, just for one year. But those would be, uh, public safety has a couple, a couple of years' worth of outstanding, so it's, uh, it's a, it's a larger, it's a big, it's a big number. I, I just checked everything off on, on the agenda for tonight, so, uh, unless I miss something. Uh, the only one that's on here is the mayor's office, uh, the mayor's office here, but.
Just zero that out?
Excuse me?
Should we just zero it out?
I could certainly.
I know which roads aren't going to get paved this year.
I could certainly speak to it. No.
No.
There, uh, again, just like the, oh, thanks, Alex. Uh, the, uh, the mayor's budget's on, on page, uh, twenty-six. And the, uh.
Oh, there's a change there.
And his budget is level funded, except for the, uh, again, the, the chief of staff is another salary we asked to be upgraded by the consultant. Uh, it's nowhere near what the consultant is going to recommend, but I'll share with you the consultant study, uh, uh, tomorrow.
Is there anybody, I mean, there's nobody here from the mayor's office. Do we want someone from the mayor's office? I, I don't, it's pretty cut and dry, except for one salary increase, but if somebody wants it, we can certainly make a request.
Mr. Aronello can answer the questions.
You're very good.
Okay. All right.
You want to ask them? Do you have a question?
I, I do. I mean, I, I didn't want to like, you know, I'm, I'm agreeing with you, uh, Mr. Chair, but I don't know what the other counselors thought, so I didn't want to push that issue.
So, um, we don't need to invite the mayor's office unless you want to, and apparently, Mr. Piano doesn't think he needs to unless Mr. Aronello can't answer the question.
Sure.
So you want to go for it and see where, how far we go?
Uh, uh, sure. I, I thank you, Mr. Aronello. So, um, so the, the one question, I, so two questions. So I see that there is an increase, uh, for, um, the chief of staff position. Um, also, there's, uh, an interest that, there's a change on the longevity. Um, are, are you able to, um, to dwell on that?
Yeah, I believe, uh, there were two people or, or two people eligible for longevity. There's a nine hundred dollars is the, when you hit your five-year mark. Uh, there's a, somebody must have hit their five-year mark, so a third person, uh, is eligible for longevity. So we put that in the budget, collectively bargained, uh, increases or by ordinance.
So, so someone hits, so, uh, that nine hundred is, um, four fifty per those two people that hit their five-year mark?
Well, it's twenty-seven hundred, uh, is the total, so there's three people at nine hundred.
So three people at nine hundred.
That's my guess, unless there's somebody, because they, it's nine hundred, I don't know what the next step is, twelve hundred or so.
So, and, and then maybe this is just a personal question. Um, do we have currently a chief of staff?
Yes, we do. Uh, the chief of staff, uh, is the, chief of staff is, is Eileen Bernal, but she's moving to the police department, and then, uh, the mayor's going to backfill that position. I think he's, uh, he's had, uh, I believe Kate Riley is the, is, is acting in that position right now.
So, um, so Katie Riley's acting in that position? Okay, so.
Or is the expectation, I don't know if Eileen's left to the police department yet, but they're kind of, kind of, it's a transition between, uh, the mayor's office and the police department.
Okay. Um, uh, but as far as your knowledge, um, uh, Mrs. Bernal is not chief of staff and whatever position she's.
Oh, no, yeah, it's not, not both positions. No, no, just, uh, just trying to transition from one office to the other.
Because my thought, I thought she had, I thought she had transitioned.
Yeah.
Um, so right now, uh, we have Kate acting as chief of staff.
Uh, that's the expectation, yes.
Okay, so, um, would you guess that the, the longevity then is for that chief of staff and then those two assistants? Okay, all right, that makes sense. Um, and, uh, also, there's, there's an increase with the, uh, chief of staff position. Can you just, I mean, I can understand why there would be an increase, but, uh, again, that's just sort of like my own thoughts. I think if, um, uh, the mayor's asking for an increase, just like how there was a discussion with everybody else, then there should be some articulation as to why.
Yeah, and I think the, the position's highly underpaid, uh, and, uh, and I think that'll be borne out with the, uh, you know, the paying class study that the consultant is reviewing with these, these positions. There's, uh, uh, I think, seven or eight positions that we've asked to take a look at.
Now, I, I am not knowledgeable about what the ordinances say when it comes to that position. Uh, but are the current ordinances and the, um, the job description within, uh, the, uh, the ordinances, does it match? Sort of like, does that pay range match, uh, what you're looking for, uh, for next year?
Uh, it will, when, when the, uh, when we get, receive the consultant's report, it'll be the, uh, it will be the, uh, paying class study, basically, as of what the position, uh, duties entail, along with a, uh, a, a better job description and, and some comparables to the communities our size.
Okay. So will the council be, be seeing that? When, when does that occur?
Uh, the consultant, we're, we're getting the consultant's study, uh, now, so I have the paying classes, just not the complete report. So I'll have that report shortly, and we'll share with the council.
Okay. Yeah, so I, I mean, and what I would add to it is not just, I mean, I think that'd be great for, for like these particular purposes. Um, but, you know, but I also think it's important for, you know, the, the council to sort of respect its own rules. And, uh, you know, one of the rules that we have is that for every, you know, every time that there's a, a change in a job description, that it goes through city council, that it goes through personnel, and that gets approved. So I just want to sort of mention that, so that when, ever, you know, whenever it is that you guys are ready to sort of get that information, that it goes, and it's not just sharing it with the budget committee, but it's also sharing it with the personnel committee, so they can do whatever it is that they do.
Job description would change, uh, because I think it's, it's the same job, it's just underpaid. Uh, and I think, uh, as Frank mentioned, in the year, year ending in zero, you know, all these, uh, positions need to be reviewed, and there's a paying class study that's supposed to take place. But again, there aren't, everybody's, uh, the finance director and so on. We're all doing the same job duties. It's just the, the salaries have not been looked at for a number of years. It's just the, the salaries have not been looked at for a number of years, and so Lawrence's, Lawrence employees have fallen way behind, uh, its peers.
Okay, I mean, I...
That, that's the impetus in this position.
Sure, without, without seeing what it is that the consultant is saying, without seeing, uh, if there's any new added, uh, um, things that the, the consultant's saying that should be in that job description. I can't really sort of comment to that, but I can, I, I, I see your logic, uh, but at the same time, I think that if there are changes, that it should be brought to the, through, through the process.
If there are any changes, yes.
Yeah. Okay. Um, those are my only questions, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Um, I don't think there is anything else, then, uh, for this evening. Am I missing anything, Mr. Aronello? I don't think so.
No, I just went through, I checked them off as I was reviewing them, and I hit them all.
So, before we recess, just tomorrow night, we have a very, 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 uh, maybe very long evening, potentially at least very deep and, and intense. We've gotten, uh, some significant departments, uh, public, well, police department, uh, city attorney, fire department, uh, of course, Lawrence Public Schools. Is everybody in the Lawrence Public Schools budget, by the way?
Binders.
Any binders?
Yep.
In our mailboxes?
Yeah.
Okay. Red Lawrence Tech Schools tomorrow, um, and then, uh...
And the library.
And the library, correct. So we've got a bunch, and then the, the first part of our meeting tomorrow will be on our general course of business. Is this even in here? Let me take a look. Our typical general city council business.
I think there's a few grants on the agenda. I didn't bring it, uh, a few grants, and then there's the, uh, Museum Square item.
Right. So those, we're gonna deal with that, um, first tomorrow, get that out of the way. And then we'll, we'll go deep into the budget twenty-twenty. All right, so is there a motion to recess?
Recess.
Motion recess.
Second.
Motion made, and second, all in pairs, the eye.
Aye.
Guys have it. We'll see you tomorrow at seven.